And we are at 6:30 just as an FYI.
Yeah, and I was just going through, looks like all the usual suspects. And Ben is here. Okay, Ben is the only one I couldn't see. So on 4:45 to roughly 6 o'clock to discuss the reopening of the Tiger, Walton School District and other business. So thank you all who participated in that. I thought it was a great conversation with our mayors and our city leaders. So that was really good. And with that, Dr. Ricky Smith, are there any to the agenda?
There are none, Chair.
Okay, this evening on our consent agenda, it includes minutes from May 4th executive session and meeting minutes, May 11th special board work session minutes, the human resources report, personnel action, and April financial report. Board members entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I second.
Motion was made and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor, and again, once again, I will do call, will call. And so in motion in favor, signified by saying aye, Director Bowman. Director Emerson.
Aye.
Director Fox.
Aye.
Director Zertzmead.
Aye.
And I as well approve. Motion carries. And with that, we will move to recognition and good news. Tracy Rose and Lisa Burton.
Good evening, everybody. Oh, thank you. I'm going to begin our presentation this evening. One thing, I'm going to share my screen about our food and transportation service teams. Okay, thank you for your patience. So this evening, I just want to start by saying in regards to our, both our transportation teams and our food service team for the TTSD school district. These are people that throughout a regular school year are the people that our students see often first thing in the morning and at the end of the day. And during a situation like this, they have just stepped up to be that consistent consistency that our students and our families need, I think, especially during this time. And so I just want to share a few slides and some information about what's been happening since the school closure. So we are honoring our meal service staff for all the work they've been doing since the school closure. They've led with compassion and continue to be champions for our students and our families across the district. Immediately when our schools closed, they began serving grab and go breakfast and lunch at both Metzger and Walton Elementary. Starting out with 40 meals and now are providing 1,400 plus meals daily. And that includes, you know, breakfast and lunch. We've expanded, we've expanded their sites, delivering through our transportation services, delivering to 10 Tiger and Walton area apartment complexes. And, you know, like I said, they just have gone above and beyond to fill that need. And they're, you know, on top of everything else, they're, you know, greeting students and families and checking in with them. And they're just another familiar face that, you know, that's been, I think, reassuring to a lot of our students. One of our sites, Metzger Elementary, was featured on KPTV. And it's actually a really great piece. I recommend everyone going and watching it. The link's here on the, on the presentation. And it's just really Rusty, whose picture is here on the screen. She just does a really great job. And as she, her quote here on the page says, you know, and a lot of our, our transportation people and our food service staff truly believe, nutrition services staff believe that their schools are a family, they're a community, and they're there to serve, and they're there to watch out for each other. And so it just, her quote just says a lot about the people that, that work on those teams. And so this is the group of people that we are honoring this evening. Of course, we have our, our leaders who spent countless hours putting together the plan. And then, of course, once we determined that we were able to serve more out into the community, they, they spent a lot of time figuring out how that was going to happen and where those locations would be and putting together not, not only the drivers who would be delivering, but also people who would be assisting. So there's additional staff who ride along every single day. And they set up and make sure that all the meals are given out. And then, of course, our nutrition services teams come in every morning and prepare two meals for every student or actually open to any, any child, one to 18 years old, to pick up breakfast and lunch Monday through Friday. So just want to acknowledge all of these people that are on those teams. And then another special thank you to Tina Skiles, who provided handmade masks to all of our drivers. And she also manages the Safe Routes to School programs and coordinates with our district, with both cities, to support those programs through our schools. And so I just wanted to say that, you know, the service would not be possible without the daily work of these amazing teams and of the people who along with providing meals, like I said, are also that familiar smile and positive interaction with students and families every single day, Monday through Friday. And so we just thank them for their service and care for all of our TTSD students and families during this time.
So Lisa, thank you. I did watch the video of Rusty that you had had on the cover sheet, and it's fantastic. And I think as you shared with all of us, just, you know, that familiar face. I mean, you could hear it in Rusty's voice, right? It was everything to her, to take her kids. And I have no doubt that all our staff that do that across our schools feel the same way. I don't think any of them, Wiley, has been amazing and just so focused on what do we need to do for our kids and our families? Oh, they are watching. Oh, yay. You guys are amazing. And I have grown to have such an appreciation for the fundamentals, right? If, if we're not feeding our kids, if we're not taking care of those basics, how do we expect them to navigate distance learning? So I will be quiet and I'll let my fellow board members chime in, but thank you. Great presentation. Thank you.
I just want to echo what Chair Wolf said about how awesome it is. And thank you to everybody who's worked on this so hard. It is so fundamental. I did have one question. That is, Lisa, you mentioned that normally we served 1,400, or last week we were serving 1,400 meals. In the normal way of things, how many meals would we provide?
Throughout the, throughout the school year?
Yeah.
I don't have that number, but you know.
It's 5,100.
5,100 a day? So we're doing a third of that and we're doing it remotely. That's amazing. That's great. Thank you.
I just also wanted to say, you know, sincerely thank you to, I think heroes is the right term. So I'm glad that Lisa, you used that language in the presentation. Just means so much to so many families out there who are really struggling for us to be able to continue this and give some sense of consistency and normalcy during a crisis. So thank you for continuing to be out there on the front lines and providing food for our kiddos.
Yeah, when I saw the 1,400 number compared to the 40 in the beginning, it was like, oh my goodness, that's how much need probably existed immediately. But transportation must have been a problem. So that was very exciting to read.
And I guess I'll just sandwich it with another thank you to everybody. It makes me really proud, all the work. I just feel like our, our district has really shined through this, kind of a dark time. So I'm just really proud of our community. I just want to thank everybody who has been a part of this. I was, I was also, that clip from KPTV was amazing. So thanks for sharing that, Lisa. Great.
Dr. Ricky Smith, would you like to close this up?
Well, relative to our food service and our transportation, I can't, I can only echo what, what has been said, all the amazing ways in which they've been wrapping themselves around our, our families and providing a much needed service, even, you know, when, when staff are thin and we're trying to rotate through and keep everybody safe. And I, I too echo my profound thanks to each and every one who's been on the front lines. You know, I've said it many times over the last several weeks that this feels very much almost like the, you know, World War II type of footing that we've had to take in addressing this enemy of the pandemic. And you really are, you know, on the front lines and really helping us close those gaps for students and giving some peace of mind to families. So thank you, every single one of you for what you've done. Outstanding work.
Thank you. And then Lisa, I think there's a second recognition and good news?
Yes. And before we transition, speaking of heroes, we're going to continue to celebrate heroes this evening. But before we transition, Lisa and I split up, so you didn't have to have all of me this evening. And I noticed she took herself off that last presentation. So I just want to make sure that we are recognizing the folks that are behind the scenes as well. Know that all of those names and all of those people were invited to watch on YouTube this evening, as well as the folks that I'm getting ready to talk about. But there are also people like our equity coordinator, Zinyan, her BECs, all of the folks that are doing the quiet work behind the scenes to make sure we communicate, we get out to these families, we take that number from 40 to 1,400. We make sure that the families are being served by Pack With Pride. So the communication tool and the beast that it is today wouldn't be done without Lisa. So Lisa, I know you, you're in a competition, I'm not very happy about. So we're going to move on now. And what I am going to do is talk to you a little bit about another group of amazing superheroes that we have, and then have their director also say a few words when I am done. So I am going to present for you. I'm going to talk to you about our TTSD tech team. Doing a quick presentation here just to show you some pictures of them and work, at work. You all know that from the minute this started, the whole, the whole reason we're here tonight virtually, what you're going to see tonight is a lot about what they have done to help get our elementary schools set up, our staff moving from the office environment to working from home, our teachers to be able to reach our students. Did I hear something? Everybody good? I'm going to touch really quickly on some of these numbers. You all saw them in the memo that I attached to the board agenda, but it's extraordinarily impressive. 200 plus parent-student phone calls over the last six weeks, 300 new hotspots, personally calling 50 plus families, visits to homes to make sure that the connection is working, 6,000 iPads to elementary students over three days, activated a call center, implemented parent help center, activated Jabber so all of us can get our, our work phones off of our computers, helped us all navigate Google meetings, Zoom meetings, CSO classrooms, Google classrooms, Slack tool for the help desk to allow live chatting, changed the phone system setup for internal help desk to ring to all 19 IT staff and technician phones, and a crash course in phone training that also included three-way calling. So when our staff are talking to our families, we can bring in others, including translators on those phone calls. Here are just some pictures. These are actually the schools at work delivering the iPads. All of the things that went into getting them ready to be delivered. These are the people that haven't slept since March 12th. Just a few of them. And again, some more equipment. And I believe, and Director Bernard is coming up, so I believe these are the hotspots. Here are the people, we're going to come back to this screen in a moment. But it is my pleasure to share with you now a presentation that was made to our tech team from our TTSD elementary music teachers that sums up how we are all feeling.
Hey Tracy, for some reason, the sound's not playing.
Is it working?
Still nothing, but we can imagine what they're singing.
Oh my gosh, we'll send it out afterwards, too.
So I don't know for sure, but I believe it's one of our middle, elementary music teacher's voice. They actually created the song and they sang it. And it's, it's really sweet. I think it was just the mute on the presentation tab that might have been a little bit, I think it was set, set on mute. But it was, it was extremely heartfelt and it was perfect timing for my staff. It was fantastic.
So I will stop presenting and turn it over to that voice that you've been hearing because this is the one, this is the one that's leading the way on all of this work. Director Bernard.
Thank you, Director Rose. I just want to say a quick thank you for the support for our school district. I think we've been extremely lucky to have the support leading up to this event, whether it's the bonds that we've had or the, our CFO, our superintendent. We've just been in a really good position to be able to respond pretty quickly to this pandemic, as it has turned out. And I, I just appreciate the staff that I've got to work with. I can't even begin to tell you how much I appreciate them. I just want to talk a little bit about, kind of give you some context for all those words that were on that one page. So there was, I think, there was 2,000 parent phone calls that we've received. I think that's probably one of the biggest pieces that amazes me on this is that the work that we were able to do, my staff was able to do with just having this problem presented in front of them, to be able to take the call, the phone system that we have and literally turn it into a call center. We did some quick trainings. We were forwarding things. We were merging. We were doing all sorts of things because we knew we were going to have to take calls from parents. And you got to realize, we're backroom people. Man, people come to us, they give us their devices, they say it broke, we fix it and we send them on their way. So we knew we had a high hill to climb and we were talking to parents and to students. It's just not what we do. And I cannot tell you how much that's really filled a lot of our buckets. There was a lot of nervousness heading into it. But I would say nearly everyone on my staff, all 18 people in the schools and in my department, we did not work with the tools that we are supporting right now. We were a half a step ahead of Google Hangouts, Google Meet. We were a half a step ahead or even behind on CSO. We tried our very best. I can't even begin to tell you this, the tool that we use, the Slack tool, everybody is on there helping everyone. It doesn't matter what position they were doing three months ago. We are all doing the same job right now and everybody is helping each other out, like for an hour on the phone call with parents to make sure they were able to get through. And that's not uncommon. Those are the types of calls we're getting now. It's an hour long to try to get our parents through to the resource that they need to get to. And it's, it is, it is huge to me that our staff has been able to come together and do that. So just by name, Aaron and Mark, Sergey and Thor are our high school technicians. So not only have they been dealing with graduation and everything else that's been happening at the high school, they have been serving on the help desk and delivering hotspots to families as far away as Beaverton because of split families or homeless or whatever it might be. They just don't stop. I think the heart of our department is, is incredibly large and it, it really came out during this time. Brandon, Albi, and Abraham are our middle school technicians. These guys are the rock stars. They're the ones that are already working with the middle school kiddos face to face. And so they kind of are the, the middle ground between who we have been working with and who we are working with. Angie and Mariella, and I'll throw Kathy in there as well. I'll speak to this a little bit more in the presentation later tonight. But we didn't have devices at home for our elementary schools. So we have a ratio, we have two elementary technicians for 6,000 devices. So as soon as those went home, the blood pressure on our two elementary technicians just hit the roof. And they're so dedicated to their job. They didn't want to give up their schools, but we had to pry it out of their hands so that they would allow us to help them with the phone calls that were coming in because we are literally working as one big department, one big district right now and not a set of schools. And it's just been so amazing and rewarding to, to work with this group. I swear they love having little problems handed out in front of them. They jump into it with the Jabber problem. We have a parent knowledge-based help desk site, the report cards and ODE data collections. Don will not like this, but the grade book chase as we were trying to figure out what we were going to do, trying to respond when we were hearing it from teachers in different angles, lots of stress there, but we've landed and all is well. Aria and Carla and Don on the synergy team helping us. We had just started the online registration and we'd only done it for kindergarten. Well, now it's open for K-12. So there's certain things like that that have just been the weirdest of timings where we were just ready to move forward. This happened and we're like, okay, let's check a couple more things and let's just go with it. And meanwhile, maintaining all the things that we have to do day in and day out. Another half a population, another 6,000 devices on our filter from home. We weren't ready for that. The system wasn't ready. We hadn't stress tested it. That took us by surprise a little bit. We had some hardware issues, which always comes up from time to time. Of course it happened on the weekend that we didn't want it to happen. So we had staff jumping in on that. And then our dark fiber project. We've been working on this puppy for three glorious years. And today, today is the day that all of our sites are up on the Fat Bean Network. So Comcast is set to turn off at the end of this month. All of them are running on the new fiber that was being built. My dad is calling. Of course he's calling right in the middle of this. So anyway, I just, I can't, the teamwork that we have, it's made us stronger. The fact that we're on the phone for so long individually with parents, how much we're helping each other, new systems to help us connect and help family, or our teachers connect with each other. I'm, I'm just, I'm so proud. I'm so proud of my staff. So thank you all very much. And let me just get Lauren and Sumner and Hung and Joe and Carlos, who were doing all the other things that need to get done and working on the help desk. These guys are not the ones normally doing the fixes and it's, you know, they did a couple years ago and now they're having to jump right back in again. So I'm, I'm so happy and thankful for the team that I've got.
Well, Susan, I just, you know, as you, it's just mind blowing what you all can do. And as I was listening to you, I just thought about, you know, this is why when you all could probably have amazing jobs in the private sector and you opted to work for the school district is your passion for kids and for education. And you're showing that in spades, just how you're ensuring that kids have access in one of the most, what could be traumatic times of their lives. And you're doing everything you can to make it right for them. And I don't take that lightly that all of you, I'm certain, could walk and find something that monetarily demonstrates your worth. And it just, listening to you, I can tell that what you're doing is changing the world for these kids and for staff. So thank you. Board members.
Yeah, it's, it's amazing. I mean, I have, I've been on so many Zoom calls and heard so many people in other districts complaining about how they can't do the technology. And all the things that they're talking about, I know we're doing, you're doing, and you're making us all look really good right now. And I know you're not sleeping enough and you're not seeing your families enough, even though you're living with them 24 hours a day. And thank you all of your team very, very much.
You're amazing.
I just wanted to say that as I was looking through that list, and of course, Susan, you added to it, I was thinking, that's more than most people accomplish in like a year or two. And you guys did it in a matter of like six or seven weeks, which even makes it more amazing. So you do have an incredible team and not only incredible team, but you're an incredible leader because they couldn't be an incredible team without a good leader. So thank you to you and your team. And it does make us very proud. I know you don't do it for us. You do it for the students. And that's the right motivation. And so thank you. Doesn't seem like enough to say thank you, but very proud. Thanks.
Yeah, just to echo those comments from Sharon, I, Susan in particular, want to say thank you to you and your leadership during this. I was talking to Margie Green the other day and we were talking about how the way that your department is organized and centralized, like we hear from, from students and parents through Pack With Pride about, like those early weeks, people were coming up to Pack With Pride and saying like, well, we need to get our hotspot. We need to get whatever. And so quickly the, the problems were resolved. And I think it was a very smoothness in the organization that made it, made it possible. So thank you to your whole team and in particular to the leadership for, for making this happen in our district.
Thank you. And it really is a team, huge team effort.
Can I say, thank you, thank you. But also thank you for sharing the pride, listening to you and watching you share everything you've accomplished. Oh my gosh, it brought a tear to my eye. So no, thank you for sharing the pride.
I just want to add that I sent, I shared the video with all of you. So you can go in and watch it. The lyrics that were written are truly the, along with the beautiful figures of thank yous, but the lyrics are amazing.
Well, I am sure that we will all jump on and watch that. And thank you for sharing. And Dr. Ricky Smith, would you like to add anything here as we wrap up recognition and good news, which has been fabulous this evening?
Thank you, Chair. And again, I would only echo what you've all said. And I certainly, because nervous, our transportation now, IT has heard directly from me how grateful I am and how, and what a point of pride it is. I think my only last comment would be to echo your comments, Chair, relative to, they could be doing anything within, in the private sector. But this is what public employees do. They choose to leverage their expertise for the betterment of society. And you've had some remarkable exemplars this evening. I know as many times our community wonders just exactly what we do all day. And this is one of our, our ways of lifting the lid off of our, our schools and our work and showing just exactly how critical these, these individuals are to the infrastructure and the services that we deliver and that we're delivering it not just And that we're delivering it not just in brick and mortar anymore, but can turn on a dime and deliver it in a virtual setting um, with little or no experience, but sheer, but between sheer intellect um, and sheer expertise, um, and a commitment to our children and our families, um, are able to craft. Um, and then on top of it angst about it to boot. Um, did I do it right? And is it perfect enough? Um, and, um, the fact of the matter is, uh, to Director Zurgvi's point, when you listen to other districts around to hear the level of commitment and can do, and I'm gonna stay after it until I get it right, um, including to my own detriments sometimes, uh, personally. Um, we should have nothing but pride and gratitude, uh, for, for each and every one of these individuals. So, um, I felt it was important, um, that, that they be brought forward to you and to our community. Uh, as yet an additional exemplars of the work that is going on behind the scenes that isn't visible to, to everyone every day.
No, it's fantastic. And, um, yeah, I, uh, you take for granted the things that are just working. And we should never do that, um, on any of these aspects of this work, uh, that's happening right now. But particularly Susan, thank you for everything you do and, and just your constant smile, right? I mean, back to, um, Director Bowman and Director Fox, what is, I mean, just your leadership that's, you know, I want, I, I'm sure you've gotten mad, but you don't show it very often. Um, you leave with grace. So, um, thank you for that. Um, so fantastic, um, recognition and good news, but we will, um, shift gears at this point. And, um, I do say Patty and, uh, Dr. Ricky Smith, I think we're, we're gonna be backed up on several cases of coffee mugs here when we all reconvene.
It's, it's, we, we've got a warehouse now that are, that are already backed up. So expect that there may be a forklift expense here in the near future if we try to deliver these, you know, out, out to all of the deserving members.
No, I love it.
For understanding that.
I love it. Um, but we will move to our student representative reports. Unfortunately, um, Teddy had a work, um, commitment come up today, so he will not be joining us. Uh, but I do believe I saw, uh, Surma and Madison. So, um, Surma, if you would like to kick us off with, uh, Creekside's report, that would be great.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I hope you're all well. I miss you guys. Really nice to see all of you. Well, so far at Creekside, the Creekside graduation is on June 4th. And as of next week, staff and teachers will be handing out gift boxes to seniors. So looking forward to that. And so far, yeah, that's all I have.
Thanks, Surma. Um, I know things are, um, especially for you guys, right, starting to really wrap up. It is so great to see that beautiful smile of yours, Surma.
Thank you.
As well, um, and, um, so I will hold my remarks as we shift into our action item, which is next on the agenda. But thank you for sharing. And, um, Madison, um, what's going on, uh, for Tiger?
Hi. So, um, for Tiger, uh, we've continued with staying connected through our social media. Um, we actually had virtual prom court because something, because, um, May 16th is supposed to be our prom over at Tiger. Um, so instead we had virtual prom court, so we voted for the seniors. Uh, we had Luke Pa and Trevor Smith as our winners, if any of you know them. And then we had a bunch of princes and princesses. It was pretty fun. Um, it was just a nice way to be like, oh, we still can do something. Um, and then a lot of seniors are happy that there is a graduation plan. Um, it's, so I've heard, initially I heard some mixed feelings. Some people were kind of like, oh, I wish it was an in-person graduation, but no matter what decision was made, there would have been mixed feelings. So I think it's good just to have a decision. Um, there are a lot of people wondering if or when we are gonna get more details about it, like, I don't know, just more details. So, yeah.
Um, Madison, thank you. And I think, um, so Dr. Ricky Smith, I mean, I think some of that communication has gone out to, um, families around graduation, um, from Mr. Bailey. Um, and so there probably is more specific details for seniors and their families and how you'll actually navigate as opposed to a board member just going, yay, congratulations. Um, and I'm sure that that will, um, that will follow, um, on the specifics for logistics. Uh, but Dr. Ricky Smith, I don't want to add anything.
You are correct, Board Chair, um, that, that there are, uh, specifics, as, as we shared this evening, relative to our earlier work session. Um, there's still some fine detail to be worked out specifically relative to, um, the diploma pickup, uh, and process. So I'll be looking for that, um, uh, relative to, um, to both Tiger and Twelton.
Okay, makes sense. Um, well, Madison, thank you very much. And, um, and I think, uh, with that, we will just move into our next action item, which is, uh, the recognition of the fantastic work, um, that you all have done. And, um, I, um, uh, Madison and Surma, um, just thank you both so very, very much for your leadership, your thoughtfulness. Um, Surma, I couldn't think of a better person as we expanded to Creekside this year to add a third, um, student representative, um, to have someone just ready to kind of embrace something new, what that would look like, be a leader, be engaged. Um, Madison, thank you for you always, your directness, your advocacy for Tiger High. And, um, so appreciate that. And again, I'll be quiet because I want to allow, um, our fellow board members to share their thinking. And then Director Emerson will, um, lead us in the, um, reading of the resolutions combined. And then we will vote on that. But, uh, board members, please chime in.
Yeah, I just wanted to also, um, say what a pleasure it was work to, uh, it was to work with each one of you. And, um, just to see you kind of blossom, for lack of a better word, just kind of grow through this whole experience. And, um, really appreciated your, um, participation, your input. Um, I just really look forward to, um, the future. And, and, and speaking of which, uh, can you tell us, you guys, what your plan is after post-high school plan?
Uh, for me, I am planning to go to PCC for two years and then do a university transfer. And on my major yet, I've been thinking of either business or marine biology.
Uh, I have been able to take the opportunity to go study at Portland State University. And I have chosen, hopefully I don't change my mind, to, uh, study special education and psychology.
Awesome. Well, thank you. And it's okay if you change your mind. It happens to, happens to all of us. Best of luck.
Oh, and I see that, uh, Principal Galorba just said that Teddy is headed to Florida State. Did I get that right as it, um, went by? So that is fantastic. So, great question. Thank you, Director Fox.
I have so enjoyed working with you two and, and Teddy too. I don't mean to diss him, but he's not here. Um, and Surma, you really have been, um, a trailblazer, um, for your school and, and for your community. And I thank you for that because you've done a phenomenal job. And Madison, I know you, you stressed a lot about missing a lot of board meetings, but honestly, when you were there, you were there. And I really appreciated that about you, that you were willing to take on and really address the topics we were, that we were discussing. So thank you. And I, I, I echo what, what Director Fox said about you don't have to know what you're gonna major in now and you can change your mind. But if you really want to stick with special ed and psych, I'm very, very pleased. Cause those are, those would be awesome majors. Uh, and then the final thing I wanted to say to you, Madison, is you mentioned, um, earlier that, um, not knowing the details about graduation was, was really frustrating for you. And I think that not knowing the details is like the call sign for this whole pandemic world that we find ourselves in. Because it's the thing that drives me crazy is that I don't know the details, right? And they change every two minutes anyway, if you, if you do find it out. So, um, hang tight and, and hopefully we'll get there eventually. It's just, you're not gonna know where you're going until you've gotten there. But thank you both very much.
I also just want to say thank you to, to both of you and to Teddy. Um, I think you, you have an incredibly large job to represent the voices of so many students, uh, in our district. Um, and really being the embodiment of student voice for the school board. And I think you did an excellent job this year. And, uh, it, you know, it's another, I think that the, the trend of the meeting tonight has been these areas where TTSD is really strong. And I think this is another area where we have a lot to be proud of. And it's in large part because of the work that you did and the time that you put in this year um, to represent your peers and to really, you know, I think like the more that we can frame the student population as a stakeholder in the process, just like parents and teachers, um, administrators, et cetera, I think that's good for the system. So thank you for being that voice and that role this year and, uh, best of luck to you all, uh, over the next few years in college.
I'm the lucky one who got to sit by you guys all year. So that's the thing that I've been enjoying the most. Um, getting to maybe encourage you to share something when you were hesitant or answering a question or making sure you knew where we were when we were going through policy. Um, but I definitely love sitting by you guys. So, um, I'm hoping to get that chance again. Um, but I am also looking forward to Director Bowman and I will get to work with the students, um, as we select next year's, um, representatives. So yet another bonus for me. But, but thank you both, and I'll thank Teddy separately. Um, for just definitely speaking up for your peers.
Um, so, uh, Dr. Ricky Smith, I'll let you, um, share anything that you'd like to. And then we'll go back to Director Emerson to read the resolutions.
Thank you so much again to each and every one of you who have brought remarkable strengths, um, and perspective to this board. Uh, it has been indeed a pleasure to watch you step into the spaces uh, and help us navigate, um, some very difficult work, starting with hate speech. Uh, taking a look at the equity lens and, and how we are applying that equity lens. Just understanding the ins and outs of policy and, and board work and embracing it all. Um, but always providing that student voice that, that keeps us mindful of you as stakeholders, um, as the, you know, the, the ones that we serve. Um, and so I will miss each and every one of you. Um, and, um, know that you are off to some amazing life, um, journey ahead of you. Um, and you look forward to hearing about your, your great successes as well as lessons learned along the way. Um, but, uh, again, my gratitude to each and every one of you for the, for the time and the effort on top of being a student and now having to navigate, um, being a class of, of 2020. Um, you've done it all with grace, um, and a, a great deal of can-do spirit again. And you really, uh, make us proud to call you alumni, uh, of the Tiger Twelton School District. So, um, best of, best of luck and, and best wishes as you go forward. You won't need the luck. You certainly have the skill, um, and you certainly have, um, what I consider to be a world-class education. Uh, and so, um, we are, we are grateful for the time spent with you.
Director Emerson, if you would like to read the, um, resolutions?
Yes. Tiger Twelton School District 23J, Resolutions 19, 20, dash 16, 17, and 18. Recognizing the outstanding contributions of school community relations of Surma John, Madison Hotchkiss, and Teddy Bronzak. Whereas Surma, Madison, and Teddy have served as Creekside Community Tiger and Twelton High School's student representatives to the board for the 2019-20 school year. And whereas they have an excellent liaison between the students of Creekside Community Tiger and Twelton High Schools and the Tiger Twelton School Board of Directors. And whereas the reports about the activities and events at Creekside Community Tiger and Twelton High Schools and the achievements of Creekside Community Tiger and Twelton High School students and staff members have been informative and articulate and have addressed issues of concern to both the students and the school board. And whereas the outstanding manner in which they have done their job this year and the leadership skills they have shown have made them exemplary representatives of the Creekside Community Tiger and Twelton High Schools' student bodies to both the school board and the community. Now therefore, be it resolved on this 18th day of May 2020 by the Board of Directors of Tiger Twelton School District 23J, that Surma John, Madison Hotchkiss, and Teddy Bronzak be commended for the outstanding manner in which they have performed their responsibilities as Creekside Community Tiger and Twelton High Schools' representatives and for the contributions they have made towards school community relations.
Director Emerson, thank you. And before we call for a motion and a vote, um, Surma and Madison, is there anything that you'd like to share with us about your experience? Or, um, just a reflection? I know that Director Bowman and Director Emerson will be asking you those conversations as you, you know, move forward for our new, um, re, um, student representatives. But anyway, I just wanted to give you a moment, if there's anything you wanted to share.
Uh, I would just like to thank all of you for all you said. And I really appreciate everything. And I just want to say how thankful I am for this opportunity and the memories I had with all of you. Being part of the board has been a wonderful and humbling experience. I would like to thank all of you for all the hard work and determination you put into this, this, uh, into these schools, this district and our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Surma. Madison?
Uh, yeah, I, I didn't think I'd get chosen as the representative simply because of my crazy schedule with marching band. And then later on, unfortunately, unpredictably, Winter Guard. Um, and then you guys called me and you were like, oh yeah, we just need to know if you can do it, like with your schedule. And I was so surprised. I literally, I was on the side of the street walking to Primo after school and I jumped up and down. My friends and my sister saw me. I looked like a lunatic to cars passing by. I was so genuinely excited because it was the end of junior year and I had just like realized that I wanted to be in education and be a teacher and be like an advocate for students who don't have anyone to be an advocate for them, or at least they have the people, but those people don't have the proper resources. And so getting to be on the school board, I was genuinely so excited. And I'm so grateful that you guys were working with my hectic schedule. Um, and then eventually with my family, my personal life. Um, it just, it meant a lot to me and I was really grateful for the opportunity. And you guys are all really fun and I loved passing the chocolate basket with you guys, especially back and forth between me, Teddy, and Karen.
Those were essential items.
They were great. I remember the first board meeting, I was like, hey, chocolate.
So that's why Karen always wanted to sit down at that end. Now I understand.
Yeah. So yeah, thank you guys.
Okay, so I will call for a motion.
I don't have the resolution. I moved to approve resolution.
Yeah, I have it.
19, 20, dash 16, 17, and 18. Recognizing the outstanding contributions of school community relations of Surma John, of Creekside Community High School, Madison Hotchkiss on behalf of Tiger High School, and Teddy Bronzak on half, on behalf of Twelton High School.
Second. Motion was made and seconded to approve the resolutions to recognize outstanding, outstanding contributions of our high school representatives. Any further discussion? Okay, all of us, um, in favor signify by saying aye via roll call. Director Bowman?
Aye.
Director Emerson?
Aye.
Director Fox? Sharon, you're on mute. For the record, Director Fox has given a thumbs up.
Sorry, I was looking for the public comment. I lost my screen.
Oh, good. Director's a repeat. And Director Wolf with an i. Motion carries unanimously. So again, um, thank you both, um, uh, ladies, uh, for your outstanding service this year. It is greatly appreciated.
And do come back and visit us.
Yes.
Love to see you and get updates on how life is going for you in the future. So please do come back. Don't be a stranger.
Yes, of course.
Um, so moving to our next item, um, superintendent, uh, and board communication, Director Ricky Smith.
Well, thank you, um, Chair. Uh, relative to, as I will be giving you a more thorough update relative to COVID-19 and where we are moving relative to, um, guidance received from ODE regarding summer. And then what we believe will be guidance going into the 2021 school year. Uh, my comments this evening will be, um, brief, um, and, uh, circumscribed to our communication plan. Uh, so for all who may be watching us in terms of streaming, if you are a parent and or a community member, you will either receive this evening or going forward into tomorrow a link to what will become weekly updates from me regarding the ever-changing nature of real A link to what will become weekly updates from me regarding the ever-changing nature of reopening Oregon. Uh and the impacts it will have on the district uh and concerns we will have going forward. Um this is uh, we will continue this until the end of this school year and then resume that beginning um. A- as we ramp up into the twenty twenty-one school year. Uh other than that, um I think that all other content will be covered this evening in my, in my report. And so um I would uh yield then to the board for their, their comment.
Thank you, Dr. Ricky Smith. Um so I um will only share um my apologies to the board. For the Wednesday night Budget Committee meeting. I will be um jumping on a little bit late. Um as my role as president-elect for OSBA. Um Jim Green, who you all know as the uh E D for the OSBA. Has um scheduled uh a call with Lindsay Capps on the governor's staff. Uh for the Executive Committee to um have a a meeting with him uh on Wednesday evening. And so I will be jumping on the uh Budget Committee about a half an hour late. Um and um I was gonna say look forward to that, but I I don't know that any of us are looking forward to the unfortunate news. That we're gonna have to um shuffle going forward with the budget. But um that is it for me. So I will um open it up for my fellow board members. Oh, and the only other thing I'd like to say, um Director Emerson and Director Bowman would love to have an update. On on the student um representative process. That'd be great.
Karen, do you wanna, you took the lead on our last meeting. Um do you wanna give that update first?
Sure. Um the application and information about the position was emailed out. To all of the sophomores and juniors. So thank you Lisa Burton for doing that work. Um the same information was provided to all three high schools, asking them to use their various communication channels. To um to again remind those students that about the opportunity. The applications are due this Friday with the plan of having virtual interviews next week. Um so. Uh it'll be interesting to see how many uh applications come in this week. I know we're both um excited to see how many since we really made a big effort to um. Really make sure the word got out.
No, I'm excited and I look forward. Um it's always an exciting process. I look forward to hearing. Um uh the results and the outcome, what you guys will have then at the next board meeting, it sounds like, if everything stays on track. So.
The only thing I would add to that uh too is um Karen and I met with Len and we sort of revamped some of the interview questions. Um and Len gave some really great advice that I think will help us. Um I think it'll give students a great opportunity in the interviews to kind of shine. And um for us to to have their personality come through. So I'm really looking forward to that process.
Oh, I love that. Um thank you all for taking that and really thinking, how can we do this better? So that's fantastic. So thank you both.
So the only thing I've got to share um that happened uh that's happened for me recently is um. Last Saturday, uh Neighbor's Nourishing Community, which I don't know if you all remember. Is a a local nonprofit organization that uh in Tiger, uh Twalton, excuse me. The ha- has a program where they they work with Mitch Charter School to grow seedlings. And then they distribute those seedlings to local backyard farmers in Twalton. And those farmers agree, I mean residents, not farmers, gardeners. Agree to give twenty percent of their produce to the local food bank, to the Twalton Foodhouse Pantry. Um and so this year, it's been a bit of a challenge. Um they did the seed distribution a couple of weeks ago. And of course Mitch wasn't, Mitch students weren't available to do their usual growing of the seedlings. But uh Neighbor's Nourishing Community was able to find another source for seedling plants of tomatoes and peppers and a few other things, corn. And last Saturday was their distribution of those. And so in addition to um all of the really cool things that Packard Pride is doing. We've now got in Twalton, Neighbor's Nourishing Community has more growers than ever, I think. Growing backyard produce to take to the food banks. So. That's just a nice little beacon of light in in otherwise dark times. And since people are doing a lot of gardening. Um hopefully we can grow a lot more food for for at least Twalton residents this year.
Thank you, Director Zertzmead. Director Fox?
Yeah, so the only thing I wanted to um add is that um. As many of you know, we have an election tomorrow and um I just wanted to wish our colleague, um Director Bowman, the best of wishes on the election tomorrow. I'm sure you put a lot of effort into it these past um three months, in addition to Packard Pride, Ben. So thank you and best wishes.
Thank you. I've been all over the campaign trail from my kitchen to my dining room, living room, up and down. So thank you for the kind words.
Well, you have been busy with the postal service too. As my mail can uh can testify. So um well, good luck truly, Ben. Um so. Um I know and um best wishes to the city of Tigered and some important measures that are on the ballot as well. Um so anything else, board members, or are we?
I did just wanna say thank you to uh to Sarah and Amber from the Finance Department. I just picked up my. My light bedtime reading for the next couple of days before the budget season, but. Um there's a bit of a hang up there, so they kind of went above and beyond to make sure that um the folks who requested hard copies, the budget could get it. So thank you for. Um you know, braving, braving the wild world out there and making it possible for us. So I appreciated that.
Excellent point. Thank you, Director Roman. Um cause I I am one of those as well that is a hard copy fan of a good old budget book. Um excellent. Um okay, well, I think with that.
I have a couple of things, Maureen.
Oh, I'm sorry, Karen. I should have assumed that you weren't, you know, um finished. Go ahead.
No, all good. Um wanted to share that I um attended virtually an Oregon Student Voice event. And I'm grateful that Director Robson was on the event as well. Um because as the students were sharing their experiences with distance learning. I just wanted to say, tell me more. And I had all these questions in my head about trying to figure out more about what was going on. But I believe that he took good notes and will have good feedback in addition to what we hear from our own students. Um but it was a great event and I could tell that the students really appreciated um being able to speak out. Um I did substitute for somebody at Senator Wyden's Town Hall. And got to ask if we could change the internet model from a for-profit to a utility. Um he did not seem super excited about doing that work right now, um since we're in the middle of a pandemic. Um but I did see that he and Senator Merkley are proposing four billion dollars to ensure uh internet access for all students. And those funds would be for school districts nationwide as well as libraries. Um so hopefully that can get some traction and go somewhere because I am sure we could spend the money. And I'm sure the city could or the county could spend some money for our libraries as well. Um and speaking of, I did speak with Counselor uh Liz Newton. And she shared that the city is looking for ways to play a bigger role. Um or expand um internet access. And so they are hoping to be able to work with the district. Um to kind of build on the work that was already done, since so many families were reached out to individually. Um there was so much information gained and if we could share that information with the city. And um come up with maybe a specific plan on how they could help us expand. Cause the idea they had was um to loan out hotspots at the library for three, three weeks at a time. But certainly that would not be long enough for our students, nor would it be long enough for our community members who are trying to um apply for a job or an apartment. Um so if there are, is some creative thinking out there, Director Bernard, I know the city would um appreciate partnering with us. Um as they make some investments in internet. Um I got to uh, well, with everybody, we all got to attend Tigerd High's uh avid graduation. I'm pretty sure I saw everybody on board. And just wanted to call out the hundred percent graduation, or not graduation, but hundred percent college attendance. That a hundred percent of them have a place to go in the fall. And that's just such an amazing program because you listen to their stories and that's not something they ever thought was in their future. Um and related, I got to watch the Upward Bound presentation and that's where I learned that Madison was going to be going to Portland State. So congratulations on that. Um and the last thing was just another topic about money, which I know we don't want to talk about. But um our P S Os, I only know of one of our P S Os who switched to an um online auction instead of a live event. And it was successful, but in general, between the uh extremely generous donations that our P S Os have made to Pack with Pride. And then the lack of fundraising events this spring, I know that that'll be um something that they'll be. Um dealing with this fall when they're putting together their budget and may not be able to provide the services for their schools that they've been able to in the past. So I don't know, just wanting to share um remembering our nonprofits in general, but particularly our P S Os and foundation.
Thank you, Director Emerson. And I, I'm glad you brought up the the Student Voice um comment because um. Um I had chatted with uh Dr. Ricky Smith about. Um heaven forbid we have a a board meeting without, you know, something um that's a work session or something that brings us all together early. But um of possibly having that that Tiger Twalton Student Voice to um hear from students, to give us some feedback directly. On their experiences um over the couple of months. And um and so anyway, I um, she seemed um supportive um in terms of pulling together. Um a team um to have some students give us um their thinking of um what. Um what they experienced, what went well, and what we should probably be mindful of as we head into the fall. Um and continue to work on um our distance learning. So um uh okay. Um well, with that, um any other comments, board members? Okay, so we will move on um to public comments. And we do have public comments this evening. Director Zertzmead and Director Fox will be taking turns um reading our comments. Um as always, um uh comments are limited to three minutes. So if the written submission is longer than three minutes, um I will stay live with my um timer on. And then um directors, as you know, um you will cease at that point um in your reading. And also as a reminder, um speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations or programs. But the board will not hear complaints concerning specific district personnel. And as a reminder, um if that um is um present in um a public comment. Then uh Director Fox, Director Zertzmead, um you will just cease reading at that point. And at that, um it is um just finished. Um as we would an individual if they were presenting uh to us in a um at the boardroom. So with tha- that, oh yes, Director Zertzmead.
So I just wanna make clear, so my and Sharon's role as a reader is we're just going to read the words in front of us. And then you will cut us off at time and or you will cut us off if it's inappropriate. Or should we sort of edit as we go if we deem it inappropriate?
Uh no, um what I expected and um so great question, Director Zertzmead. Um I uh if you want me to stop you, um I, it is not our role to edit.
Right, that's kind of what I was thinking. So just.
Yeah, we had a pilot run of that last week and after reflection, no, Director, you did a great job. Um it really is what we would do in the boardroom and that protocol continues to exist. Um and uh so with that, uh let me get my timer um set.
Yeah, I'll read the first one, which is from Emily Tran, a Walton High School sophomore. And then uh Director Fox will read one from David Imes. And I'll read one from Michael Bednarik and Director Fox will read one from Eugenia Soto.
Okay, we have four. Very good. Um okay, so Director Zertzmead, are you ready?
I am. All right. On behalf of the three hundred signatures in support of the T T S D free period products petition. This speech asks the Tiger Twalton School District to put period product dispensers in its middle and high school girls and gender-neutral bathrooms. In the budget for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year and beyond. Currently, the only way for students to get a pad is to go to the nurse's office. There are no tampons. Period products are as essential as toilet paper. If students had to go to the office every time they needed toilet paper, wouldn't that be an issue? The system T T S D has in place treats periods as optional. If you need period products, you may go to the office. The periods are not optional. It's not something that you can hold in. It happens to half our population. And denying students the access to periods products is denying students healthcare. One in five teens cannot afford period products. These students can't focus on their classes because they have to bounce around school asking friends for pads or tampons. Sometimes because of their periods, they skip school altogether. Putting dispensers in our school bathrooms means that students will be more comfortable coming to school on their periods. Because they know they won't have to worry about where they get pads or tampons from. Access to period products also means access to education. It's not impossible to install period product dispensers in our middle school and high school restrooms. Portland Public Schools achieved it. They first piloted the project at Grant High School in the twenty seventeen, eighteen school year. Then moved it to expand across their seven high schools in the twenty eighteen, nineteen school year. Portland Public Schools realized the needs, the need for p- period products, and so should Tiger Twalton School District. Three hundred plus people, the majority of whom are Tiger Twalton students, signed a position supporting this cause. We ask that T T S D validate the right to period products by putting period product dispensers in the budget for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year and beyond. We would like to have follow-up information concerning this speech and its proposal, please. And then the uh, the the uh petition goes on with uh thirteen more pages of. Of signatories and I won't read them all, but the uh, the uh public comment is submitted by Emily Fan Tran.
Okay. Um I will hold that. So yes, so um thank you, Director Zertzmead uh for sharing that. Um and like our other public comments, then we will um follow up. Um so Director Fox? Are you ready?
Yeah, I am. So this is from uh David James. Um hi, my name is David James and I'm a parent in the school district. I, along with several, several other Latinx parents, feel that we have not had the opportunity to share our thoughts regarding the reopening of our schools. Will you be collecting any public input on what we want to see? I know that O D E will give us guidelines, but I think that the district will have the ultimate say. But what about us? What about the parents? We care for our children and we do not want to risk their health. So how can we be involved in the process? Thank you, David. He's also a teacher at Bridgeport Elementary.
Um excellent. Thank you, Director Fox. Um and Director Zertzmead, back to you.
Okay, this one is from Michael Bednarik. He writes, hello, my name is Michael Bednarik. I'm a heterosexual male and I live at eighty-eight fifty-five Southwest Lehman Street, Tigerd, Oregon. It has come to my attention that there has been talk after two months of doing nothing about the district's looming budget cuts. That the board and the administration are going to possibly game the system and lay some employees off one day a week. Just so they can collect unemployment benefits and get a raise. This would be the morally corrupt and repugnant to-do, especially considering what many people in public education. Who have repeatedly said about it being the school's job to raise other people's children and teach them good morals. If I were you, I would not be looking to P P S for guidance, given their track record. Or to use the child's theory of everyone else is doing it, so I will too, and that makes it okay. Either way, horrible choices. To all the district employees who have talked about how hard it has been to work at home during the shutdown. You were receiving your full paycheck and your gold-plated benefit package. There are thirty-five million unemployed Americans who are trying to pay their mortgages, utilities, and other bills with no paycheck. Also, many of them are now without health insurance. Far too many of them have no jobs to go back to and will then have to compete for the scarce ones that are out there. Unlike public employees who have only been inconvenienced. I am sure you will all get a participation trophy for doing your job from home. Also, to try and say the work you did in Tigerd, Oregon during the shutdown is like what America had to endure during wartime is also reprehensible. There is no comparison. We are all equal, but some are more equal than others. So after I got my stimulus check and instead of putting it into my own retirement account. Or putting it on my mortgage's principal balance, I made sure to put it in my property tax envelope. So that I could make my PERS payment in November for the district employees' pensions.
Thank you, Director Zertzmead. Uh uh Dr. Ricky Smith, um I know it is not our um practice to. to uh respond um immediately to a public comment, but you have made comments about this um publicly, I believe. Um I didn't know if there was anything specifically now you wanted to comment or.
Thank you so much, Chair, and I think directly to this, the the program to which there it was referenced as known as work share. It is something that we did take a look at as a district um and uh evaluated against potential savings that we could then apply to the next school year. We have opted not to pursue work share. Uh and so I want to be very clear that that will not be something this district will be engaged in.
And I would just like to add, I spoke on the telephone with the individual who wrote this letter three days ago and assured him that we were not doing it because I had had that conversation recently with administration. And I told him we were not doing it. So I'm a little surprised to see his letter claiming that we are doing it. Um because it just came in today, as I understand it. So I'm not quite sure what's going on here. Because I told him in no uncertain terms, we weren't doing it.
Okay, um well, I um I appreciate the um somewhat break in protocol, but I thought that could be addressed um quickly. So with that, Director Fox, um would you like to uh close public comment with our final um note? Thank you.
Yes, this comment is from Eugenia Soto. Dear members of the board, I would like to learn the process and criteria that you are considering to make important decisions for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year opening this fall. I respectfully ask to please make us parents, participants, uh please make us parents, participants, and give us the opportunities to voice our many concerns during the decision-making process. The health, safety, and physical integrity of my children are my first and highest priority. I have many questions and can only imagine other parents are in a similar situation. If there is already a process in place to invite PPS parents to participate in this process, I would greatly appreciate your sharing the details with us or give us directions as to how you can contribute to this process. My regards, Eugenia Soto.
Okay, um and I think as um and I appreciate all the public comments, and I think as Dr. Ricky Smith has addressed, um we are at the very, very, very early stage of that um discussion, and um certainly more information as well as input um will be um uh pursued. Um so with that, I will close public comments, and we will move to reports and discussions uh with one item, which is Dr. Ricky Smith's COVID-nineteen update.
Before we move on, can I just say one quick thing, and that is I'm I'm really pleased that we are getting this much public comment when we are having our board meetings by Zoom. Um it shows a great deal of the interest that our community has in what we're doing and their engagement, even when we're all on computer screens. And I'm just, I'm really proud of that fact.
Um well, and I also appreciate the interest and the advocacy for um engagement. Um and I think that that's a practice we've demonstrated and an expectation that our parents now have, which is fantastic. And a great transition to Dr. Ricky Smith, so.
Thank you, Chair. I'll I'll see if I can do the magic one more time in terms of pulling up my my screen. Uh so if you'll just bear with me for a moment. Um yeah, does it show? Yes, it does. Well, it says I'm presenting. Can you see the COVID-nineteen update? Uh good, because I can't, so. Thank you for that. All right, um so this evening, um it is my pleasure, and I'm going to try to go to slideshow here. So please, someone tell me if you if you see that here in just a moment. Um if I can get to present review. Uh can someone tell me if you can see this still?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, thank you so much. Um so this evening, uh this is yet another one of um what has been an ongoing series of updates to the board and to our community at large uh relative to our work in during the pandemic uh with COVID-nineteen. Um so where I want to start this evening is first on a distance learning student engagement update. Uh at this point, uh we are uh nearing sort of the midpoint, coming into the the home stretch, if you will, as we head to our last day, uh which will with students will be, as per our approved calendar for the nineteen twenty school year will be June eleventh. So last day for students K eleven uh will be June eleventh. Um all levels at this point, um meaning elementary, middle, and secondary are working on developing a standardized method for tracking student engagement and social emotional well-being. Uh the state, uh given the nature of the uh pandemic, um did not develop attendance, guidance, or rules at this point. But we anticipate that as we go forward into the twenty twenty-one school year, and I will do a light touch there this evening, uh that that will uh certainly be developed. And so currently, our internally, our staff have are are working on methods to standardize um how we we mark uh student engagement and then uh respond to those students that are not engagement engaging relative to distance learning. Uh we have pushed out surveys to distance learning team, teacher teams, as well as a parent survey that just recently went out. Uh we are in the process of doing the analysis relative to parent survey as to how they are experiencing the distance learning and areas for us to pay careful and close attention to um as we consider that uh option going into the twenty twenty-one school year. And there will be a few to report to the board uh relative to the that survey as well. What you have in front of you uh here is just one example. This is at the middle level. Uh you can see again that there were different metrics that were used, and so standardization will be important. Um but uh Fowler um basically is reporting uh there the way in which they're looking at engagement is that the student is turning in at least one assignment per week. And you can see the percentages there from seventy-two percent um at the sixth grade to fifty-eight and fifty-three percent respectively at seventh and eighth.
I apologize to um interrupt, but your slides aren't progressing for some reason. We're frozen publicly.
Pressing for me. So let me see if I can um end here. And can you see this now?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So it's presented view. My my apologies. Um and so um again, back to um you see how Fowler uh uh measured it relative, student engagement relative to assignments turned in, at least one assignment per week. Hazelbrook uh was relative to the teacher content contact relative to um SEL, um social emotional learning. And so you can see respectively at sixth grade, eighty-seven percent engaged with staff, and then eighty-two and eighty-four respectively at seventh and eighth grade. Trollope had a a a slightly more developed model, um and so you can see at least one assignment was one measure. Um and uh you will see eighty-one percent at sixth grade, eighty-four percent at seventh, and eighty-three percent at eighth. Students on IEP, seventy-eight percent, EL students at forty-four percent, our Latinx students at sixty-six percent, and our Pacific Islanders at fifty percent. Again, um what is not shown on this slide but needs to be understood is that for those students who were not, the staff did not receive a contact, um staff are continuing to reach out and work with them to understand uh what may be getting in in their way, maybe a barrier for them to engage. Uh and that will be useful information as we go forward into the twenty twenty-one school year. All right, let's see if I can get this to the next. There we go. Um relative to the reopening of Oregon, on the fourteenth, the governor announced that uh twenty-eight counties were set and had met the phase one reopening standards. Two counties uh plans were not approved. Those were Polk and Marion, and the state is supporting them in terms of a um refinement of their plan um in in hopes of getting them to a phase one reopening approval. Washington, Mount Mountain, Clackamas counties are working to apply by mid-June. This has more to do with the fact the sheer population density um and the requirements of a phase one opening, um which includes uh according to Washington County, will require them to double their public health uh staffing relative to providing tracers and contacters relative to uh understanding if when an outbreak has occurred and how quarantine is going. And then it also has to do with the availability of PPE as well as um healthcare facilities, hospitals' ability to handle a potential uptick relative to their EDs uh and and their ICUs. Uh the stay-in-home order then is enforced still for Washington County at this time until they have a successful um plan, phase one plan uh approved. Uh our districts remain, our district facilities, and this is statewide, remain closed until June thirtieth. And I appreciate the board's um uh willingness to meet with our community partners. All four of our mayors were in attendance, as well as our two Chamber of Commerce executives from Tigard and from Trollope. To discuss the challenges that we are facing relative to use of our facilities as the weather becomes nicer. Um and I appreciate um a collaborative effort on their part to work where us where where we can all work together collaboratively um to develop ways of communicating to our community to let them know what facilities are open, what facilities will soon be open, and what facilities cannot open um based on what the the current guidance is uh from the state. Regarding summer programming, on Friday, May fifteenth, we received the summers, the spring summer twenty twenty guidance. Uh it is uh on the ODE website, supporting all learners beyond distance learning. Uh specifically, uh Director Emerson, to your question relative, well, what does this mean for our seniors going into uh the summer because of the opportunity for them to continue to uh finish their credits up through August thirty-first? We will run that as we normally would any summer program, which is um which is to e- extend an invitation to teachers uh to who would like to volunteer during the summer. Uh they are paid per diem. Um this follows Article thirteen of our TTEA uh collective bargaining agreement. Um should we not have enough staff um who um are available to provide that summer support, we will then uh use edgenuity, which um is uh through the TTOA summer program, which you recently approved um in at our last board meeting. Uh in addition to this, uh Director Fields has put together um a task force, uh meaning using the leveraging our associate principals. They are going to develop principles and values for summer programming that's based on the guidance that we have received. They will create a list of the historically run summer programs so that we can sift and sort by priority. We will also include a program for distance learning, credit recovery, edgenuity being one of those. Um there will be a larger task force that will be built, and this it as with our distance learning work will include teacher and support staff uh at at the various high schools. In addition to each program, uh we will develop a structure and that aligns with ODE guidelines. And there are very specific structures uh that had had are outlined in the summer relative to numbers of students who can be convened, uh cleaning procedures that must be followed, um methodologies relative to monitoring temperature and students and staff for illness, and a variety of other things that we will have a more refined report to the board and to our community uh once you've had an opportunity to sift and sort through the entire guidance and develop a a process for reporting that. Uh we will also identify um who will be people who will be responsible uh for monitoring and leveraging this plan, much like we did with the supplemental and then distance learning, and then identify the various funding sources that ODE is requiring us to consider um and braid together. This would include title funding, state funding, and other federal sources of funding to try to leverage as many opportunities for our students and and compensatory method um and to address the holes that have been created uh as part of the uh immediate shift to distance learning. Uh and then already and then prioritize not only our seniors who are important uh to finish their work by August thirty-first, but certainly our special education students who will require compensatory education. Our English language learners are emerging bilinguals who will require additional support and assessment as we go prior to going into the twenty twenty-one school year. And then also taking a look at our typical bridge programs, such as the preschool into kinder, our um eighth grade into ninth grade, and some of the other bridge programs that we have in place, prioritizing those based on both on both on staffing um and the critical nature of of that work, and then our ability to serve them um in the smaller cohorts as prescribed in the the guidance from ODE. As to the twenty twenty-one school year, we expect that there will be final guidance out of the week of June fifth through eighth. And that was also stated uh today in my first of what will be several community um messages, uh typically on Mondays or or Tuesdays of each week. Um as I shared with you in your board update, I'm considering a model that has four components to it as we uh prepare for the twenty twenty-one school year. We have been told to expect that the state will give us guidance as to a hybrid model, which means that there will be smaller cohorts of students who will have some face-to-face time during the week with staff in a very prescribed and tight process. Um but also, there will be a heavy reliance, continued reliance on distance learning. We also understand the state superintendents that there may be families who wish a total distance learning process. And so that is absolutely part of our planning is to consider what a online experience um for the entire year could be for those families who feel that that is the safest option for their student. And they have the the capacity to support that um in in their own personal um their own personal homes. That all being said, the model includes um a team that looks specifically at instruction, and we will leverage uh our distance learning task force and many teachers who have brought their expertise and skill to that. We will also have a team relative to facilities. Now, what we need to do to meet the guidance that has been outlined by ODE, I believe that the summer guidance is a precursor to what we can expect in terms of the final formal guidance for the twenty twenty-one school year. In terms of cleaning procedures, methodologies used to screen students and staff of potential illness, uh methodologies in terms of when to use PPE and when not to use PPE, um transportation, and what will be expected in terms of uh keeping buses clean and providing social distancing, who should wear masks, who shouldn't wear masks. Um and then um I the third um group would definitely be a a stakeholder group of which we would, as we have done with our SIA planning process, what we have done with our budget process, what we do as a community, we will gather input from our parent community, from our student community, from our business um and uh our mayor's community um a- as we are refining um and developing a plan that fits the ODE guidance but is uniquely TTSD. Um so uh I I wish to echo the OSAA um Director Peter Weber's comments. There are more questions than answers, and as it as it relates to fall sports, um they also are in the thick of work. They have developed contingency work groups for each of the fall sports. Uh we expect that there will be some initial guidance that may come out as early as this week, um but nothing that is tru- truly refined until uh they receive their final guidance from ODE and oh the Orton uh Health Authority. Um and then just again, as a as a light touch, to remember that June eleventh, per our approved calendar, is the last day for students, that we anticipate we will have a calendar in front of the board for your final approval uh after the June fifth of guidance is out, and we can uh fully get that and then determine uh what the next steps relative to a calendar for twenty twenty-one would be. So our community again will be alerted that this isn't, this is now in the works um once the June fifth, June fifth to eighth guidance comes out, and then we will have a final calendar for your consideration and approval for twenty twenty-one. As to the state budget, uh we know that we are expecting a shortfall of two to three billion dollars in the state um funding. Uh we will have uh a final number presented uh as part of the May twentieth forecast on Wednesday. We know that every one billion dollars in decrease in the state budget translates to a seven-point-five-million-dollar decrease to the Tiger Twelton School District. Therefore, we are anticipating a shortfall of thirteen-point-five to twenty-two-point-five million for one year in the twenty twenty-one school year. We know that the Students Success Act and SIA, while there is great energy on the part of the legislature uh to provide some of that funding through CATTAX, we know that they also have a great deal of conversation to be had in terms of the impacts uh on the state economy and uh our business community at large, and have a great deal of conversation ahead of them during the special session. Uh what are, has the Tiger Twelton School District done to this point relative to addressing this gap going forward? Um I have instituted an immediate spending freeze. It is enforced. I have instituted an immediate hiring freeze, except for critical, mission-critical positions. That is also enforced. I have instituted suspension of travel, uh staff um trainings and other other pieces that require staff to tra- travel outside of the district or convene large groups within the district. That is also enforced. I have directed department heads to develop budgets with five, ten, and fifteen percent reductions. We are in the midst of a program inventory review with the DM group, as the board is well aware, as part of our smarter school spending strategies. And we anticipate that there will be a certain level of savings that can be extracted from that. We will also make a strategic use of our district reserves over the next three years. It is very clear that, given Oregon's history, that even with the sudden nature of this shortfall, that we are probably another two to three years out before we will fully recover. That was certainly echoed by the Fed Chair yesterday on 60 Minutes and again this morning in The New York Times, who very clearly says that, said that he does not expect a full recovery, depending on what happens in the next year, and at least until 2021. And so we will have to be very thoughtful about adopting the use of those reserves as part of the solution. Any additional strategies that needed to be added to this list will be considered following the forecast, but most especially following the special legislative session, which we anticipate will be sometime mid-June, possibly as late as early July. With that, again, I do just a light touch relative to an expansion of our TTSD communication plan. And so now, starting last week, I instituted a cycle. On Thursdays, our board administrators and confidential's receive a brief update from me as to where we stand with the reopening of Oregon and any new guidance that has come out from Oregon Department of Education that may impact us. On Friday, then, an all-staff email goes out so that now both our administrators and leaders in the district can be sense makers to all staff as they receive it and process the information. And then on Monday, or no later than Tuesday of the following week, parent and the community receive it now because there's a larger body of individuals that they can contact or know personally to provide sense-making relative to what they are hearing from me in a brief video message. Please understand that all of this relative to the communication plan is couched in the very fluid nature of reopening Oregon. So again, I go back to Peter Weber of OSAA. We have more questions than answers. What I know today may change dramatically within 24 hours. And so as that happens, we will then give another update brief and to say, it was this, it's now this, as we continue to navigate the reopening of Oregon and any potential COVID outbreaks. And with that, I leave it for questions and discussion.
Board members.
I do have a follow-up question, Dr. Sue. Because what I was really picturing was for all of our high school students, that any one of them who, as of June 11th, that gets an incomplete, but it's an incomplete because there was one paper that they didn't quite finish, or there was one math standard that they didn't quite show mastery of. What does it, what does, what does continuing their education look like?
Right. And at that point, Director Fields is also available to us this evening. But I would give a high-level view of that, is that that is part of the worksheet that they have, the Excel spreadsheet where they are monitoring students' progress. Michael Delarva, as you can see clearly, in Tiger Twolton, they have a distance learning team, support team, that is navigating that with students. It is, my understanding is of today, that 11% of students at Tiger Twolton, of Tiger High School, if I remember correctly, and Director Fields, you can correct me if I'm wrong, are currently in need of some support during the summer to successfully complete across the range of issues that you're talking about, Director Emerson. So it could be as much as totally completing a course to finishing up the last several pieces. And that is the work that will be navigated. But all of those students will have opportunity during the summer to receive your support. Director Fields, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
No, I think you captured it. I think just in short, like you said, we had 11% at 12% and 13% at Tiger as far as kids that are off track. Some do have a plan to come back fifth year and always had. But the distance learning support teams are doing, pulling these reports essentially every Wednesday, that they know exactly where students are. The minute they hit that threshold of passing, the counselors get alerted for a senior, and that process will continue on. And again, they have till August 31st to complete their credits.
And our freshmen through juniors?
That'll be part of the larger, yeah, that'll be part of the larger plan relative to the compensatory education, providing those opportunities. And I think that depends, Director Emerson, that is a high priority for us. It is called out in the summer guidance from ODE with the caveat, understanding that we will need to braid funds and think about funding as we're going into the summer, how to support that.
And the only piece I'd add there is their deadlines different. Seniors have until August 31st, 9 through 11 have till September of 2021. Obviously, we don't want to wait that long, so they are a priority this summer. But their credit assurance plans are good through September 2021 is when we have to guarantee they reach that credit.
So. I'm leaving it on myself. Okay, shit, no, Director Fox, go ahead.
So, Dr. Sue, I was wondering with regard to the student engagement data, what, besides just the data from Fowler or the middle schools, excuse me, what have you, what have you learned so far with regard to student engagement? I, it's been interesting just watching my older, my youngest daughter, you know, with her online learning in Oregon State, how they learn to use the fast button if you're talking too slow, you're a professor.
They have that teaching type of courses.
They're not talking fast enough, so we're gonna fast forward our course. So I was just wondering what kind of learnings, besides just the immediate data that we saw before us, that you gleaned from that?
Yeah, again, I think there are a number of thoughts here. I think the first is, is that distance learning certainly provides even deeper cover for those students who probably would have been in attendance concern were we still in brick and mortar. And so I think it's just one more way to totally go under, you know, radio silence if you choose to do so. More importantly, and I think this is, this is the crux of the social-emotional context, that is the larger concern for our staff and for our principals, and certainly for myself and the cabinet team, is that we are aware of where you are socially-emotionally in terms of, is it, you know, is it food insecurity? Is it you're having a hotspot issue? Is it that there are other needs that are occurring in the family? Certainly, one of the things that we angst about a great deal are our safe organ data. So we're overlaying that as well. While we have not seen a significant uptick, we pay very close attention, particularly this time of year, as we know that the potential for suicidal ideation and an attempted suicide goes up. We know that the opportunity for abuse also has gone up. We know that the calls for domestic use has gone up across the time that area. And so that's part of the challenge and the concern when we are not able to reach a student. I think it more firmly highlights the disparities and the inequities in our system. And so again, getting to a stance where perhaps we, we may not be to a place where we're ready yet to call, have internet service as a utility conversation, but certainly anything that we can do to love the playing field and make it economically available helps all of us understand what's happening for students and for families. And that will continue to be a point of advocacy on our part as we move forward. I have no doubt that as we get into the 2021 school year, ODE will also address the longstanding issues relative to how we actually will try to take attendance and then also provide, you know, guidance relative to how we can develop a grading process that is fair but is not heavily reliant on the pass, no pass that we had to rely on in the, in the short few days that we had this spring. So I'm expecting that that's going to get refined as we go forward into the next year as well.
And Dr. Sue, I'm curious, thank you for that. I'm curious with the measurement with regard to the difference between, at least one assignment per week versus contact per week. Is that something that's, that's standard? Is that what other districts are using?
No, literally, in Director Fox, as they go along, because there was no guidance given. I think, again, our first priority was, are you okay? And is your plan okay? And then it was a matter of, all right, now, if that's fine, you know, can you tell me where you are with your learning? And I think, again, part of the opportunity that we have, and why I am so grateful to each and every one of our teachers who's been engaged, is that they're going to be able, they are a wealth of information as to, you know, what worked, how we build on that, what isn't working and understanding. Some of it is going to be pretty straight up. We're going to understand, yeah, I can see where that was a barrier. We can fix that. But other things may not be visible to us. And so I think, again, gathering that, the input from both the parent community, that's why that parent survey is going to be a very rich amount of information, but also gathering the same information, again, repeatedly from our teachers, and then constantly, it's that monitor, adjust, monitor, adjust, monitor, adjust as we go forward.
Thank you.
Oh, I have a question regarding that 10 to 13% of our students who are not making it yet and the distance learning that that's going to take over the summer. Is that distance learning going to be facilitated by staff who we were intending to keep hired over the summer? Or are we going to need to extend some contracts for teachers past their usual June, middle of June contract?
And so, again, I refer you to Article 13 of the CBA for TTEA. We have language there that basically, and it is no different, Director Zurch, than any other summer schedule. So it is, you know, here's an opportunity for you to participate in summer school and you are paid per diem. But I'm also very mindful that there has been a tremendous amount of heavy lifting and people may just plot out, need a break. And we have that second layer, which is the edgenuity and other online platforms to support that. What I will tell you is that in the summer guidance, and you received a copy of this guidance in your update this week, it basically calls for discrete and plans for discrete cohorts of classrooms of no more than 10 students, but that must be the same 10 students with the same teacher. And so that's some of the picking through that we're going to have to kind of think through, what does that look like? It's one thing to talk about that in terms of special education or EL. That's more circumscribed. But while you are talking about the variety of needs that potentially a high school student may need or a 9 through 11 student may need, it may be a better option to point them towards the online learning versus the direct. And again, I'm speaking as, in the level of first thoughts, because we're going to start tackling that tomorrow in Cabinet and then be refining that because I firmly do believe that this is, you know, just the foretaste of the guidance that is yet to come from ODE. Director Bowman, I know you had a question or comment as well.
Yeah, I was going to ask about, so as we transition from the end of this school year into summer and then summer into the next school year, in terms of devices and hotspots, what's, does this sort of continuity look like for students, especially at transition levels when they're going from elementary to middle school? What does that look like?
Well, right now, it looks like pretty amorphous. But the conversation I had with Director, IIT Director Bernard, was the fact that rather than, because the turnaround is going to be so short. And, you know, what I appreciate about our directors, Director Bowman, is the fact that they're already thinking about the need for summer learning as well as the transition into the next year. And so a lot of our conversation today was relative to what devices do we really need to pick up? What devices do we not need to pick up? What devices should we be instructing families that they need to hold on to so that they have engagement? One of the conversations that, you know, again, this is just hypothetical at this point, but one of the other conversations is what opportunities are there for students to remain engaged and continue to read and do other things online because they have the hotspot and the device in their hands that we may be overlooking? And so rather than be in a rush to do what we would traditionally do because we're in brick and mortar, because we are now in a virtual space, how do we maintain that and keep it in place to support continued opportunities for learning and supplemental opportunities, you know, in preparation for the next school year?
Thank you.
There will be more to come with that that'll be refined, because I think you absolutely hit on one of the biggest issues. My child is a fifth grader and now a sixth grader. So how do I swap that out? Right?
My follow-up question on that sort of realm is in terms of internet access for students in our district, in terms of deploying hotspots, what kind of coverage are we at right now? Are we feeling the need that we're going to have, we're going to need new hotspots next year for students moving in and out of the districts or, you know, needing replacements? Or what does that look like right now? Because I know we were struggling right as the requests struck.
I'll defer to Director Susan Bernard, if she's still with us, and I think she is. Yes?
I am. I think it's a good question. I think it's what we don't know. As far as the requests that have come in, we've been able to 100% meet those. I think the challenge is in that data that we're showing about who we're not able to connect with. Chances are pretty high that those folks will also need internet connectivity. So there's those that we haven't reached, and then there's the possibility that if we don't engage kids over the summer and use those hotspots, they may get lost. They're not very large, and therefore that same family may need something in the fall, and we don't have something to give them. So some of it's trying to provide some meaning and use and tracking of them while they're out of our hands so that they can use them again in the fall and then probably have a certain percent on hand to make available.
One of the pieces, Director Bowman and board, is that Director Bernard and I also had a conversation about the need for a parent technology boot camp. And so, you know, providing multiple options for families to really become savvy relative to the device that their child has and relative to the use of a hotspot if that's the means by which their child is connecting to the internet. Additionally, when we think about sending out guidance and input, it will be also, you know, depending on whether a family chooses to go hybrid or potentially, you know, full distance learning for the year, that there would be sort of a checklist of characteristics and considerations that they must, you know, think about prior to choosing one or the other and the facility of moving back and forth so that it meets the needs. It's as tailored to their family's needs as possible. But certainly understanding these are the things that are going to have to be in place and that you're going to have to navigate with whichever choice you make.
That makes sense. So Director Bernard, do you have a sense of, you know, what percent of students in the district have internet capability in their homes now? Now that we've sort of done the first round or second and third rounds of hotspot deployment, do we have a sense of what that is?
Yeah, so just rough numbers, we've got 12,500 students and we have 250, call it 300, just for easy math, hotspots that are out there. And I don't know the exact numbers of who we haven't connected with, but say that's 1,000, right? So we can start working with our numbers. Maybe we have about 2%, 3% of our population that right now have come to us and told us that they don't have internet connectivity. Yeah, we're at, what we are seeing on the help desk line is potentially other issues that are not hotspot-related that present themselves as being internet connectivity issues. And now we're getting into the weeds of, is it really that you don't have internet connectivity? Or is there some other barrier in front of you? And that's a great, easy way to say that I don't have what I need to participate. So that's what we're facing with right now. But we have 250 hotspots. Most of them are out. We probably have about 20 to 30 that are still left. And then a good portion of families, we haven't been able to connect with, that we don't know what their needs are.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Good discussion. Any remaining questions? Okay. Dr. Ricky Smith, thank you for that very important update. And, well, Director Bernard, anything else you'd like to add, Dr. Ricky Smith?
No, thank you. And certainly, we will provide additional updates to the board as we receive final guidance and then our work plan and how we will proceed going forward and certainly engaging our community as we do so.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So we will return to action items, part two, and we will start with redefining learning program technology purchase. And that is Director Bernard.
Great. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. This evening, we're discussing the request for some purchasing and also simultaneously an update that we've heard parts of, whether it was through the Budget Committee update, but around the redefining learning program, as it's been called, of getting devices in students' hands. So on the cover letter for this evening's board meeting, tried to explain perhaps a little bit to, not enough detail for you, but we've had an eight-year plan. But we've had a eight year plan when the two thousand and sixteen bond passed. And with that bond, we received eighteen million dollars allocated. We built a budget based on the eight years and the eighteen million dollars and to get us to a point where we could outfit our students and our staff with devices, students especially, one to one. And we could also support program labs such as graphic design or engineering that a student's level device at four or five hundred dollars would never be able to accommodate the the program. So that was what the budget encompassed. It was supposed to last eight years. And so within that, we also wanted to make sure that in purchasing devices to get to one to one for students. We trained teachers on how to teach leveraging this tool and gave them the comfort level of adopting or refreshing them every four years. So depending on when the initial replacement for the age group that that teacher was working with. They would be assured that they would have them replaced again so they wouldn't have to figure out how to teach without them in four years. So we are now one to one. And part of that process is looking now at year to year, what is due to be refreshed during the cycle? And so that is what this request is. The request itself is for the purchase of some devices. iPads specifically for three elementary schools that are due to be replaced. A high school journalism lab and then a few teacher devices for new staff or replacement staff come fall. I will begin into the presentation just to give you a comprehensive look at what we're looking, what we're talking about for the program. I'm not going to show you this video, but this is the video that we sent to the budget committee. If you have any interest and and have some gaps maybe in the the path that we have been taking since before two thousand and sixteen. Really goes back to probably two thousand and eleven even about trying to build this program within our district to make sure that all students had equal access to devices. And then also to make sure every teacher, not just select teachers or phyllo teachers, had the instructional skills to leverage that device in the classroom and that wouldn't be hit or miss. So that's the the work we've been doing over the last few years. And you might have seen it through the budget committee. You might have seen it through academic return on investment. It comes up in a variety of different ways. As we had planned, it took some different approaches along the way of whether we did whole schools or grade levels. But this year, as we discussed before, we are now at a hundred percent of our students with one to one devices. So again, just for everybody's sake, from kindergarten to eighth grade, those are iPad devices. And from ninth grade to twelfth grade, they're Chromebooks. One of the things that might just give you a sense of where we are at a high level. Just some quick running of numbers across the systems that we use to manage our devices. We have about sixteen thousand computers for staff and students. So that includes Mac computers, laptops and desktops for teachers as well as those program labs that we talked about that exist in secondary school, not in our elementary school. We have a small window of Windows computers. So we're a pretty heavy Apple Mac district. That's changed over the years. It's always been seventy to eighty percent, but it's really really moved in that direction. And I I don't have a real sense of why, other than I think teachers have made that choice as we've gone to teachers switching out their devices and by preference. And we have four thousand Chromebooks or so and about nine thousand iPads. I think the other thing just to make mention of, that kind of goes back to our good news as well, which to me explains why the stress was so heavy at elementary school. Not only did we not have devices going back and forth home to school and age of the students, you know, five year olds, six year olds, six year olds, eight year olds. And their level of responsibility at that age, but we only have two technicians supporting those ten schools. When the devices are at school and the teachers are at school and there's a schedule we can count on and a and a system for putting in tech requests. It's not a huge stress on our system. But as the devices went home and now we're supporting kids at home, really one to one with their families. It it's become quite a workload. So as we move into continued distance learning and hybrid learning. We're just going to have to keep an eye on how we might have to shuffle some of the the staffing around to make sure that we're accommodating for all of that. The idea that we have a three thousand to one ratio for technician, for computers to technician support is is kind of crazy. But in reality, that is what we have. So we'll we'll want to keep an eye on that. And just another note to just the fact that we were able to do online distance learning was made possible by the bond that we had. The redefining learning program plan, which by no means was just me, Jennifer Sapinski. Has been involved with this from nearly day one, if not day one, actually, working through that. We've we've had a variety of help and resource from the teaching and learning or curriculum instruction department over the years. I think the key that's really helped us is that connection between teaching and learning or instruction and technology. And then our academic return on investment strategic planning. I think that's really given us a little bit more teeth to our program, which is distant, different than other school districts. This page is snapshots of a spreadsheet that I work with that may not be as clear to you as it was to me when I made it. The idea here is that we are ready in two twenty twenty to purchase devices. Two thousand and forty, which is we, I increased that because I'm concerned about the number of devices that have gone home with kids with the amount of breakage that we've seen and or loss over the summer. So we have, that's why that amount is twenty two hundred in the request and not just twenty forty. If we were going to go one to one and we had everything back, twenty forty would do the trick. But we are, we always lose devices to damage or theft. And I I know we will see an up, an increase in that this year. And then here's our high school journalism lab. And my my point in this slide is that at this point with our budget, we were at about seventeen six, seventeen million. So we already are running below our eighteen million dollar budget. And so that is the intent of this screen is that we had an eight year plan. The budget is still on track. Even with this COVID change and distance learning and having to purchase a few more iPads at this point. We are still on track to stay within the budget for the eighteen million from the bond. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Director Bernard. And board members, questions?
Do we, is there a way, I know we can track whether or not the the hotspots are being used. But is there a way to know whether or not the devices themselves are being used?
Yes and no. We've looked at that and and typically it starts with that question. And then the question that comes up right after that is, are they being used effectively and efficiently and on task for, you know, educational purposes? And that's where it falls apart. So I can tell you the last time that device touched the network. I can tell you to some degree what they were doing. Like our filter gives us some pretty graphs about seesaw is the biggest piece of the pie. Well, that makes good sense for the elementary school. So I think there's some high level pie charts that give you an idea of where they're going on the devices because it forces it through the network. But after seesaw and after, say, Google Classroom, all the rest of it, YouTube could be instructional, it could be not. It's really difficult once we get into the weeds to know exactly what they're doing with it.
Yeah, that totally makes sense. I I'm curious about whether or not, you know, if there are some families who, you know, maybe the student has a nicer laptop than the Chromebook provided by the district. If there's opportunity for for savings, if, you know, there's like an opt out procedure, for example, where a family could say, we don't need this device. And we could redirect that resource to other places. If there's ways to know if that's, you know, whether or not that would be worth the time or or save potential savings.
I think those are really good questions as we get our even if we weren't in COVID land and distance learning, say, we were continuing with the regular school year. If we had another year, maybe two under our belt and maybe still. I think that the tools that the teachers are relying on right now, things like Netop, which is a classroom management tool, which you can only use when it's our devices. I think they're very comfortable with that. As soon as I think they grow in their comfort about how the tools can be used and there's a little less structure around how we use it. I think that's when we can lean away from a school issued device and let kids bring in what they may have at home. We've also in this discussion talked about the the equity angle. So having a school issued device versus that really fancy fifteen hundred, two thousand dollar MacBook Air that your parents bought you because they can was also kind of a a red flag for us. So I think there's some benefit there. I think we'd have to just be really thoughtful about how we walk down that path. And I think as we near the end, we're kind of in the middle of this eight year cycle as we start thinking about going out for another bond or thinking about how we're going to continue financing this. I think those are the types of things we have to think about and devices will have changed quite a bit in a couple, three years. So maybe that's the opportunity that we have that won't have it stand out so much if it's a home device. And teachers will be more comfortable with something that's not something they actually have to control with a software for classroom management.
Thank you, Director Bernard.
So my question is about the the bond itself, and this might actually be a better question for Director Moore. But with this eight hundred and fifteen, fourteen thousand for this year's devices, what does that leave us in the bond for technology? That was which one?
That would be answered probably by Director Moore, but I can give my stab at it. But let's let's let our CFO answer that if he would like to first.
Well, I would, I would go back to the last slide of the presentation to show where we're at. Projected to be at the end of the, the, I think we we had this conversation recently, Director Bernard and I about looking ahead to when we might have another bond on the ballot. And making sure the last round of replacement lines up with that. And it seems like I always have to look at my notes to to talk about the year. But I think we're we're talking about a possible election in in two thousand twenty, fall of two thousand twenty three. And Director Bernard has plans to do another, do the final round of replacement with the current bond proceeds, I believe, in spring of two thousand twenty four is what we decided. But I may be off a year, but that's what sticks in my head.
Yeah, no, you're spot on.
And so she's got it mapped out and her and Sarah are probably two, within a dollar of knowing where they're we're at with these current bond proceeds. I say that in jest, but they're they're spot on. You know, they're both keeping their own set of records of where we're at with the twenty two million. And we feel good about our our trajectory and our pace of future year replacement before these bond proceeds are fully expended. In addition to transitioning us into another, a new, a new round of, or a new bond and a new round of proceeds.
Okay, so what I'm seeing on the the slides I saw in the board packet, it's the 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 millions, three, five, six, thirty two running balance. That's not what we've got left in the bond. Okay.
That is the eight year total balance. We're a million under the eighteen million. So.
Okay. I was having a, I'm I'm not a a good numbers person. I was having a really hard time deciphering.
You are not alone. There was a similar request and I found that slide looked great when I made it. And now it really is not as clear as I had intended it to be.
Well, along those lines, it looks like we're under budget very significantly on this particular. Yeah, that's great. I was just curious, what do we do with the old ones, the four year old ones?
So we don't know yet about the Chromebooks because that will be next year, but we have found there is a hot market out there, warm market out there for iPads. So that's part of where we have tried to figure out what that sweet spot is about when we refresh and how much money we'll get. We had that conversation this year and it's not, it's not enough to move us to a three year to be able to get rid of devices a little bit earlier and get more money for them. But as life settles down and we get back into a regular cycle. We usually, last year, we pulled them in by the end of June. We sold them off by the middle of July. So we get some funds that come back in from that sale that our business office is putting in yet a separate account. So that's not even from what we are looking at with the eighteen million. But iPads we sell from, and we used to get rid of them probably four years ago. We just would recycle them. But now we sell them. And I imagine there'll be some value to Chromebooks, but we'd also discuss the possibility way back when before we even went out for the bond of welcoming a ninth grader with a device in high school and letting them carry that through. And if they graduate, they take it with them. So trying to align that just so that means our freshmen coming in would get Chromebooks. And I, we aren't situated in that spot just yet. So I think it might take another year to kind of right size the way we've rolled this out since we didn't do it by grade level and make it all fit unless we do a huge shuffle. But that's part of what David and I were trying to discuss earlier. I think we're away from, one year away from that.
A little bit of a, a little bit of a sidewalk that I, as we think about that next bond and our technology needs. Director Emerson might be with me on this, but a a fall odd year bond ask is a little, gives me a little bit of angst off of a a general year. But anyway, fast forward in my thinking. So.
Don't do it.
See, I know. As soon as I heard it, I know that Karen and I are going, you can't do that. So that's a point for a different conversation that will plant the seed.
Wait, is that leftover Susan Stark Hayden?
Well.
It's good knowledge.
It's good knowledge.
Plus we'll have the levy. But on that note, I move that the board approved the purchase of Apple devices with twenty seventeen bond funds and authorized the district superintendent or CFO to sign the purchase order to Apple Inc. in an amount not to exceed eight hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and ten dollars.
I second it.
Second. Motion was made and seconded to approve the purchase of Apple devices from the twenty seventeen bond fund. And any further discussion? Well, hello, Todd. Signify by saying, I, Director Bowman.
Aye.
Director Emerson.
Aye.
Director Parks.
Aye.
Director Zurchme.
Aye.
And Director Wolf says, I am motion unanimously carries. And with that, we will move to our next action item, which the welcoming of Director Robson is new course proposals.
Yeah. Board Chair Wolf, members of the board, good to see everybody. We do want to shift into new course proposals. As you know, each year we we take on new course proposals and they come to us through TNL and work with our high schools and and middle schools if if there happens to be a new course proposed. Mostly from our high schools, though. And and as you know, we we have a system where we take the the proposals that come to us and then work closely with our high schools or those who are proposing, if you will. We vet those proposals through a committee. And then we, if there's any edits, any questions, anything and everything to make sure that we understand and can assist and support in the development of the proposal, we'll do that. And and that was no different this year. In January, in in February, rather, we had some new courses come to the board that were approved. And then what, as we've worked through this process of new course proposal, one thing that we got feedback on was that there is with a window that is January with a board presentation in February to get folks ready for, or schools ready for forecasting. You know, that works out well, but there's also been this need expressed for in May, coming into the spring and before schools out. There's been feedback that to have a second window would be advantageous. And so we did that. And we did get a couple of new course proposals this year from Twelton High School. And so we worked with the process. You've seen in the board packet, you've seen the two proposals. And I do have, we probably, I put a reminder out to everybody that in May, that is the second window. And so we may see, we may see a few more proposals, again, based on some need that schools are seeing. That's that's not for sure, but we may see some things, for example, around our CTE programming as we look at that kind of unfolding for next year. So more to come on that. But our deadline is May twenty second on this last window. So this evening, we have two from Twelton High School. And with that, also with us is Principal Delorba. So he has been kind enough to sit side by side here and and actually speak to both the lift classes being proposed and the popular culture class. And so with. um, both the LIFT class that's being proposed and the popular culture class. And uh, so with that, uh, I will turn it over to uh, Michael.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see all of your faces still here in the same meeting that we started at four forty-five. Um, we've had lots of great reflection actually, and uh, it's been a real, it's always a good learning experience to sit back and listen to everything that's going on. So I just appreciate all the work that's happened tonight. Um, hopefully you've had a chance to look over the courses. I just wanted to talk about each one briefly and then answer any questions the board might have. Uh, in the popular culture course, um, if you had a chance to look through the course proposal and also the proposed syllabus, you would see that this class is actually looking at um, trying to meet students where they're at. So uh, finding ways to critically engage students in popular culture and using it as a, as a um, way to dive into English Language Arts standards. Um, was, was an interesting idea proposed by a teacher before this uh, crisis ever hit. And we decided to leave it on our forecasting just to see what interest would look like. Um, we've had uh, enough to, we have enough interest in forecasting numbers to offer a section of this and, and we would make an adjustment in our English Language Arts Department's current FTE if we're able to. And if not, in the, you know, if not when things change in May, then we would, we would take a look at is, at numbers then. But um, there were enough students that were interested in this course and um, and we think we might even get some students that are taking this as an elective um, to fill out their electives in their, in their uh, graduation requirements, not just for English Language Arts. So uh, that's that course. And then I'll talk about LIFT a little bit. Um, so we made a shift in our LIFT offerings this last year. Um, you know, I was proud of being in front of the board last year and we talked about, you know, um, nine out of ten seniors in LIFT graduating. Um, and you know, we have, I've actually moved to ten out of ten now, but all the seniors have graduated. We, this year's um, students, we needed to focus more on ninth grade. And so we have a larger number of ninth and tenth graders in LIFT. This has always been seen as the end, we wanted an early intervention in LIFT. And in order to continue that programming, um, one of the key tenants to SRT that we proposed, you know, a couple of years ago now, is developing leadership once they've moved through some of the critical stages of social responsibility training. And this is what the course was intended to do, is to develop leadership structures. Um, I'm really proud of our team for developing a syllabus in this course. Um, Carrie Samuelson, who is our therapist and LIFT teacher, sat down with um, Eric Wadsworth, who is our leadership teacher. And they looked at all of our leadership curriculum and looked for a marriage between uh, chances for students in LIFT to develop some leadership skills. And our hope is, is to start to springboard these students into school leadership positions in, you know, in their later grades, eleventh and twelfth grade, but also to generate some skills for them within their current circles and provide really positive peer mentoring, especially down to the middle schools. That's where we want to expand the LIFT programming to train leaders to go down into our, our middle schools at, you know, Hazelbrook and Twolty and develop uh mentoring programs that will benefit both middle school and high school students. So that's the thinking behind these two courses. Uh, the FTE for the LIFT Leadership Course will most likely come out of the current uh, LIFT teacher allocation. We would collapse a period of case management because we've added um, four masters in social work interns to our um, juvenile departments um, supervisors list. Those student, those people can now manage a, a, a good chunk of the case management work that goes on the LIFT arm and we can um, develop instructional, uh, instructional side a bit more. So this is really an evolution within our current LIFT program. It's not additional FTE. So those are just a quick, quick approach into one. I've, I've answered many questions uh, from you all through email, but I'm happy to answer any more now.
Michael, thank you. And you answered my questions um, in your presentation and email. So board members, any additional questions? Um, and thank you so much for your time this evening. Greatly appreciated.
Of course.
I don't have any questions, but I'm just thrilled to see that uh, the, while I'm not usually a great fan of pop culture, um, I am a huge fan of getting students to take English classes in disguise as an elective. And so I love that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, any chance you get a ch- you know, you have to sneak in writing some essays where they don't realize they're actually doing that is awesome. And the LIFT program, I think that mentoring is just, is, is stellar. It's, it's what the kids at the middle school need and it's what the kids at the high school need. So it's, it's a perfect match. So I really like both of these courses.
Yeah, and I just wanna um, just, uh, I was really impressed by the uh, by the LIFT uh, class in particular, just because I'm a, a big advocate of the program and just really think it's a great, I just love how you um, are also um, integrating into mentoring the, the Hazelbrook and um, a twolty kids. So I, I just think that's, that's great. So best wishes and I hope maybe I can sit in on one of those.
I'm sure you can. You're about to reach nothing wrong, you know.
You mean when we actually get to go back to school again?
Can't wait, can't wait.
Um, Director Roman, Director Emerson, any questions?
Nothing for me.
Okay.
All right. I'll move to the Tiger Twelton School Board to approve the following new courses at Twelton High School, LIFT Leadership and Pop Culture as presented.
I second.
Motion was made and seconded to approve the um, courses presented for Twelton High School. And please signify, uh, oh, any further discussion? Um, signify by saying aye as I do roll call, Director Roman.
Aye.
Director Emerson.
Aye.
Director Fox.
Aye.
Director Zertzme.
Enthusiastic aye.
And Director Wolf is an aye. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Michael. And um, I agree, it'd be great to, even if it's a Google set in, um, to see these crosses um, play. So, thank you very much. Um, and so I think, Director Robson, that was it, correct? And um,
That was it.
So we now move to the final um, item on the agenda. And that is the um, evaluation of um, Dr. Ricky Smith. Uh, that has been included in the board packet. So anyone um, who chose to read through that certainly had that opportunity. Um, just, I will speak briefly and then I, I just want to be able to hand, offer that up um, to my fellow board members to share. Um, the evaluation was based on the criteria of the superintendent's standards um, which were defined um, in the board packet around visionary leadership, policy governance, communications, community relations, management of resources and personnel and instructional leadership. In addition to that, um, we also compared um, and looked at um, Dr. Ricky Smith's superintendent goals um, which were to evaluate and improve equitable outcomes for all students. Implement the district, district strategic plan with a high degree of fidelity, um, implement and extend A R O Y and meet the overall, excuse me, goals of the district's bond program. Um, assessment of Dr. Sue's year included a portfolio of evidence which aligned with these standards as well as her goals. And we also completed a three sixty evaluation. Um, a hundred and four individuals were invited to participate and we had sixty-six complete this anonymous survey. And to give perspective of the types of participants, we asked her peers, representatives from our municipalities, uh, business representatives and associations, um, our union leadership, cabinet members, administrators, and student board reps, members um, of the uh, SSA community uh, work groups as well as budget community and of course the board. Um, and I felt we really, um, as I said, the re- responses were anonymous, but I was pleased with the overall um, level of uh, engagement in that process. Um, given that it's been truly an unprecedented year, um, some components of Dr. Ricky Smith's measurements were not completed due to the district's closure in the last term. But having said that, um, Sue's leadership during SSA and her quick pivot to address COVID nineteen and distance learning were distinct examples of Dr. Ricky Smith's leadership. The board has found her exemplary in her work this past year. We look forward to continuing um, some work that again, because of the closure in our school year, um, was not able to be completed, such as our um, launch uh, into hate speech work. Um, and we also um, look forward to further developing um, our work with our unions as we head into a year like no other. Um, we thank Dr. Ricky Smith for her unwavering commitment to our students and her deep passion for serving um, this community. So Dr. Ricky Smith, um, I personally thank you from the bottom of my heart for um, just your relentless work um, all year. And with that, I will hand it over to my fellow board members.
Well, I think um, evaluation sums it up and you did a nice job too, um, Director Wolf. But um, I just want to echo everything that um, Director Wolf said and just say it's been a real pleasure to work with you, um, Dr. Sue, last couple of years and um, exemplary, I think is um, sums it up. Um, and even despite uh, really difficult circumstances and, and what amazing progress we've had over, so I'm kind of sad that the whole COVID thing happened, but um, as we all are, but uh, despite that, I mean, just all the reports out tonight have been amazing. So, thank you.
And I would just like to say that we've had such a year. Um, with, with student success being such a huge lift. Um, and then to go straight from that to COVID, that leading a district through that takes more than anybody ever signed up for. Um, and I just am really impressed with the grace um, and the, the solid leadership that you have demonstrated through this entire insanity, Sue. And so, thank you. I am I knew at the time that we hired you that we had the right person for the job. Um, this year sealed it absolutely. I cannot imagine how we would have made it through this year with anybody else at the, at the helm of our ship. And so, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sue, for, for your work this year. Uh, we sincerely appreciate it. I think, uh, Maureen, you put in a lot of work on writing that evaluation. And uh, I did also just want to comment and say, I've noticed that the communications plan you released moving forward was incredibly responsive to what um, we, we brought up in that um, uh, evaluation. So just wanted to thank you already for um, for your work on that and for taking it so seriously um, moving forward and uh, hopefully we have a, a smoother, smoother sailing next year, but uh, in, in, in the case that we don't, um, uh, I'm looking forward to another, another year of working with you. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, definitely. Thank you, Dr. Sue, and thank you for being everything we expected and were looking for when we were looking. Um, and definitely looking forward to the work continuing.
Hmm. So, um, uh, Sue, I, I kind of wanted to stay on point, so I was, I was reading my comments, but um, truly, um, it's been just a tremendous pleasure uh, to work along with you and just the clarity of your vision and the execution and just your commitment to that um, has been fantastic. And um, keeping your humor along the way. Um, that or cry, you know, I mean, it's been that kind of year. But um, certainly I'll give you an opportunity if you want to say anything before we move to a motion, so.
Only to say that I am truly humbled um, and appreciative of your work. Um, what is most important to me, as I showed you before, um, is the fact that uh, I am able to continue to grow um, and expand my skill set. Um, I firmly believe as superintendent models for others, um, how they should approach their, their careers and education. We never stop learning and we never stop growing. And I, I'm most appreciative. For starters, I appreciate the accolades. I'm most appreciative of the constructive criticism and areas in which I can continue to deepen the way in which I serve this district that I have come to love dearly. Um, and um, I'm grateful, um, again, for the privilege to serve you as your superintendent. Um, and I can truly say it's been a pleasure. Um, I've said this several times over the last several weeks. I can't think of a better group of individuals to go through a pandemic with than all of you um, and this district. Um, and um, and sincerely hopeful that better days, I know the better days are ahead of us. Um, but whatever life may throw our direction, I have no doubt that we will face it. We will face it not only with grace, but a great deal of skill and, and most of all humor, because that's what life is all about. So, thank you for the love that you deserve.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
A motion, Tiger Twelton School Board to approve the twenty nineteen, twenty evaluation of Superintendent Dr. Sue Ricky Smith as presented.
Nice.
I share.
You're fast.
Motion was made and seconded to approve uh, the evaluation of Dr. Ricky Smith as presented. Any further discussion? Okay, um, so uh, please signify by saying aye as I do roll call, Director Bowman.
Aye.
Director Emerson.
Aye.
Director Fox.
Aye.
Director Zertzme.
Aye.
And Director Wolf is an aye. Motion unanimously carries. Um, once again, thank you so much, Superintendent Ricky Smith. And with that, um, we are adjourned. I think you are, right? Yeah. Alrighty, um, you all enjoy the rest of your evening and I'm sure we'll be chatting very soon. So, thanks. Night all.
Thank you all. Good night.
Night.